Just you and me, huh?
I have to run to the little boys' room.
I'm gonna run now, too.
Back in two minutes.
Betsy, I tried calling you today, but I missed you.
Yes, I'm sorry. I emailed you that I tried to call you back.
I'm trying to think, tomorrow morning, I know I'm busy because I'm doing some work with the new hirees.
Oh, good. We'll catch up, Bob. Thank you for, thank you for trying.
How are we doing there? Let me if I get to the end and I don't remember that advocacy thing, please remind me. Peter Katz informed me he's moving his son into college. So I didn't know that, but he can't join us tonight. So everyone knows. I think, should we start? Matt, are you ready? Okay. Welcome to this public meeting of the Princeton Board of Education. The Board is an elected unpaid group of 10 citizens who set policy for the district and make decisions on educational, financial, and personnel matters for the Princeton Public Schools on behalf of all residents. We are always pleased when members of the community attend our meetings. The Board and the school district operate under applicable New Jersey laws and under regulations of the New Jersey State Board of Education. Each meeting includes an opportunity for those attending to comment on items on the published agenda or other matters of interest to them. The Board reserves the right to limit the time allotted to public participation. Law limits discussion of individual personnel and confidential matters. We desire that our meetings provide useful opportunities for communication between the Board and the community. So thank you all for attending.
As required under the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 1046, at sequentia adequate notice was given for calling this meeting. It was authorized by the Board of Education and forwarded to the municipal clerk Princeton Packet and the Times on January 9th, 2020, and distributed to the schools and others on the standard distribution list. The Board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. Board Policy 2230 Recording Devices requires that we inform those attending that this virtual meeting, virtual Zoom meeting, that the proceedings are being recorded. This meeting is not being live streamed. Representative of the sending district is authorized to vote on such matters that affect sending district students or affect the governance of the Princeton Public Schools, as more specifically designated in NJSA 18A 388.1. In the event this statute is amended, the wall shall take precedence over this bylaw. Sending district votes pertaining to personnel actions refer to high school, central admin, and district-wide staff only. Votes otherwise are considered abstentions.
Thank you, Mr. Bolden, would you call the roll?
Yes, I will. Beth Baron.
Yes, here.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Here.
Dan Dart.
Here.
Jess Deutsch.
Yes.
Betsy Baglio.
Here.
Brian McDonald.
Present.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder.
Present.
Peter Katz. Daphne Kendall.
Here.
Susan Cantor.
Here.
We have a forum.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda tonight is item D1 Adoption of Minutes for the August 18th, 2020 meeting. Can I have a motion, please? Jess, second. Betsy, any discussion? If not, Mr. Bolden, could you call the roll?
Beth Baron.
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Yes.
Dan Dart.
Yes.
Jess Deutsch.
Yes.
Betsy Baglio.
Yes.
Brian McDonald.
Yes.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder.
Yes.
Daphne Kendall.
Yes.
Susan Cantor.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Item E1 Harassment, intimidation, and bullying is a consent item. So we'll move past through that until we do the consent agenda at the end. Next, it's time for my comments. And I will just say tonight, again, thank you to our administration and our staff and our community. We are all working through this really difficult situation together. I know that our administrators reached out and spoke to, I think, over several thousand people last week on different Zoom calls, explaining our plans for reopen, which was an extraordinary feat, and we're grateful for that and glad to have the community coming and asking questions. And I know that we are producing new FAQs and new information from our principals. Also, and I'm sure Barry will speak more to that. I want to just mention that we met with a search consultant. I don't know, Betsy, if you wanted to say anything quickly, you're our liaison with the search consultant and maybe can give people a quick update.
I'm happy to. We met today for the first time at 5:00 PM with our search consultant. We're all very excited to get this process underway. As you know, Dr. Galasso is here on an interim basis. So we will be having a section of our website devoted to the superintendent's search. And there will be a number of focus groups and open forums to which you will all be invited. There will also be a survey, which should launch around the first day of school. And we really do look for all of your feedback to help us create a superintendent profile of what we're all looking for here in the Princeton Public Schools. So our timeline will be up and other supporting information will be up about this search, and we're eager to get started. So thanks in advance for your cooperation and participation in this process.
Thank you, Betsy. And also, I want to comment before I'm going to turn it over to Daphne Kendall because we have some good news on negotiations. I just want to say we have another meeting. We're just continuing to meet as necessary in order to get the restart and all the other things happening. So we have a tentative meeting on September 8th, which is not yet on the calendar. And our next full board meeting will be on the 15th of September. Ms. Kendall, would you like to give us some, some good news for, for us tonight?
I would, thank you, Beth. So tonight, I'm pleased to report that the Board has come to terms on contracts with our teachers' union and our support staff union. Earlier this month, the Board approved a one-year contract with, with our administrators' union. The unions are in the process of presenting the details to their membership and holding Zoom meetings to answer questions. We anticipate being able to vote on the support staff union contracts at our September 8th meeting. The teachers' union, PREA, has scheduled the vote for September 9th, and that contract will be voted on by the Board later in September, assuming it's ratified by the membership. It has been a priority of the Board to come to terms with our unions. And we're thankful for their, for the partnership and leadership during these difficult times. We will be able to provide additional details about the contracts once the unions have ratified the contracts. So thanks.
Thank you for that update. And thanks to you and thanks to the committee for moving that along. And it's a, it's a big, it was a big, big job, and we're really, we're all grateful for that. Dr. Galasso.
Okay, thank you very much. Just two quick items. I just want to say thank you to the administrative staff for all the hard work last week in engaging our parents and thank our parents and our faculty and staff for entertaining us on the Zoom meetings for the entire last week. And I really appreciate all that work. Also, out of the Zoom meetings, you know, we asked our principals to send out letters to each individual, from each individual school, along with sample schedules and FAQs, which I think are important because a lot of the questions that moms and dads and parents and grandparents asked were about individual schedules. So we wanted to get that information to them. The FAQs will be updated on a daily basis, and we will be sending out additional communications regarding the health and safety of our buildings and the HVAC upgrades as we move closer to what we hope is a phase-up reopening on October 12th. The other direction that I was given by the Board was to put together a broad-based community planning committee to change the name of PUMS, which is the Princeton United Middle School. And I'm happy to report tonight that Board members Baglio and Bronfeld will be the liaisons for, to, to the committee. I have extended invitations, and most of them have been accepted. I'm still waiting for a couple. But I'm happy to hear, to report that Shirley Satterfield is going to join us along with one of our staff members, Jen Bigioni, and also Jason Burr, the principal of the middle school. Other invitations have been extended, and we're just waiting for their replies, which I'm sure will be in the affirmative. But summertime being where people are out and about, it'll take a little bit longer. So I hope by the 8th, the committee will be formed, and their first meeting will be set. And I'll report back to you. But I say thank you to all of you who have agreed to do this important work over the next few months and develop a program where we engage not only the community, but at the Board direction, we wanted to also make it a learning opportunity for our youngsters. So we're excited to do that. And more details will be coming on the 8th of September. That's it.
No, thank you, Dr. Galasso. Short and sweet tonight. That's great. We have been going since 5:00, just in case anyone wants to know. All right, so that takes us to our public forum, H1. We invite the public to make comments to us on the, you can raise your hand on the Zoom. And we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes, that you state your name and your address. And we will not respond directly. We're here to hear what you have to say. Dr. Galasso may correct factual information, but otherwise, we're just ready to hear from the public. So. Mr. Bolden?
It was Abigail Rose.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you. My name's Abby Rose. I live on Wee Chief Lane. I'm a parent of a rising ninth grader and 11th grader. And I just wanted to weigh in about the decision and whether or not to hold fall sports. You know, this, this decision, like so many decisions regarding COVID, we have to weigh competing interests. On the one hand, we have the significant rewards from sports. So things like social interaction, especially at a time when it may be the only option for, for our kids until October 19th for the high school. Physical activity, of course, kids have been cooped up. You know, there've been many fewer opportunities for, for activities, although there have been club sports and private sports, which is, which have been going on, you know, all summer. And of course, the joy of playing on a team. Both of my kids have been on various teams over the years, and they love it. I mean, it's just, for, for those of you, I did not play team sports, but I'm just amazed and so impressed by the significant benefits that kids and adults can have from playing, playing sports, team sports. On the other hand, it is true that having a season versus not having a season increases the risk of COVID transmission. And there are reasonable arguments on both sides. While, you know, I am ambivalent at this, but however, at this point, I would prefer to see a season go on, given the low numbers of COVID cases in our area and the fact that all of the sports are going to be outside. So, you know, the only other point I wanted to make is that intramurals, which I've seen written in places, is an interesting option because it would reduce the number of potential contacts. So those are my, my comments, and thank you all. I am amazed by, for those of you who are volunteers and for, for those of you who are paid, all of the efforts you've put in, and I appreciate it. Especially, I started that parent meeting the other night and left the room and came back at 10:00, and it was still going on. That was, that was quite, quite a feat. So thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Bob Correll.
Hi, good evening. Dr. Galasso, members of the Board, members of the public. My name is Bob Correll, and I am a science teacher at Princeton High School. This school year will be my 24th at Princeton High School. For more than the past 10 years, I've also been the membership chair for the Princeton Regional Education Association. Yesterday, I had the pleasure to welcome the new teachers to the district. As I welcomed them, I told them we have a wonderful school community of excellent educators along with parents who care deeply about their child's education, though sometimes they care too much. As I have said to every crop of new teachers for the last several years, there is a right way to do things, a wrong way to do things, and a Princeton way to do things. Until you have been here for a while, you will not truly appreciate what I mean by that, though I suspect, Dr. Galasso, you are starting to understand. I did not speak at the last BOE meeting because I had not been able to consult with my doctors before that meeting. And even though I have not had the chance to consult with my doctors, I indicated to the district that my intention to ask for a medical accommodation. I only felt it was fair to give the district advanced information. My intention was only partially due with comfort level, but more had to do with science. Is there anyone who is listening to me speak right now who thinks I should ignore the advice of my doctors? Should I remind you that by ignoring the doctors and the scientists is how we got to where we are now? As for comfort level, I have been in PHS periodically this summer doing work in preparation of virtual or hybrid instruction. As I have seen the efforts that have been made in terms of physical barriers with Plexiglas, at the same time, I have been informed by my colleagues of several classrooms that have been skipped in this process. On top of that, we have seen no sign, as of yet, of the promised hand sanitizer or sanitizing materials in individual classrooms. At the last BOE meeting, I was, we were informed of a purchase of equipment for the HVAC system to create ions that will help neutralize any virus particles that might be in the air. While this technology sounds very promising, I spent most of one day searching the internet, and I could only find trade propaganda telling me how wonderful the technology is on airplanes. I could not find any peer-reviewed research articles that demonstrated actual controlled tests on the technology in any setting, let alone a school with large open spaces, such as auditoriums, learning commons, or even hallways. But more than that, in my 23 years in the district, I've seen how often the HVAC system has malfunctioned. I can even remember the year we spent the entire month of September without a functioning AC system, only to get that fixed when the parents were to be in the building on the day of back-to-school night. This past year, across the hall from me, the classroom was so hot and warm weather and so cold and cold weather that the room was basically unusable. So am I skeptical, skeptical about a brand-new system that is added on that does not always work on, to a system that doesn't always work? You bet I'm skeptical. Finally, I have informed the administration at least twice that if you really want me to feel comfortable with ignoring my doctor's advice, there needs to be regular surveillance testing of staff and students. I've been told that this is not practical, even though the Los Angeles School District of over 300,000 students has announced that they will do testing on all students and staff before returning to class. Why do I want this testing? Because I do not trust the students to practice social distancing or wear masks when they are not under our direct supervision. What could lead me to this feeling? Two things. Just drive down Nassau Street, and you will see plenty of our town students walking around in groups with no masks. And two, look at the news. Have you seen what has happened on college campuses this fall? Do you really think our teenagers will behave much differently than those on college campuses?
Dr. Correll. Dr. Correll, thank you so much for your comments, but could you wrap it up, please?
Yeah, I'm on my last sentence.
Okay.
So given what I have seen, who amongst you would ignore advice given to you by your doctor? Thank you. That was it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else out there that has a question? Greg Robinson.
Yeah, just a quick comment. I was on the PPS website today looking for information on Canvas, and there's Power School information that's still on, as well as Canvas information. It's a bit confusing. I'd recommend, we're not going forward with Power School anymore, that we just get rid of all the Power School information that's on the, on the website, so it's less confusing. Thanks.
Thank you. Julia Dipple.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
You can.
So I'd like to follow up on Abby Rose's call. I also have sons that are very interested in soccer and have played and currently play for the high school program. Typically, the soccer in Princeton take a hiatus in the fall for the boys' sports. But they're, according to the coaches of these clubs, they are willing to go forward with removing the hiatus and playing regular scrimmages and possibly friendlies, and certainly training. But we need a decision from the high school as to what's going to happen. So I know the Board is the one that makes those decisions. I'm asking you to make a decision sooner rather than later, so the kids can get back to the sports they love. And if the answer is no, then it's no. But please tell us and let us know, so we can move forward. The other thing I wanted to say was that I understand the fear of the teachers and the worry. But I'm just wondering how the teachers with young children who are working from home are going to actively be able to teach and interact with our kids if they also have the responsibility of taking care of their own kids. I was just talking to a friend of mine who teaches in the West Windsor School District, who is going back hybrid, and the school district is providing childcare for teachers. So I was wondering if the Board would consider doing that for our teachers as well, to help them do a better job with our children. Thank you.
Can, can I just respond to that comment? Because I think it's important. That is a great idea. And I did speak to the superintendent, West Windsor Plainsboro. The difference is that they have so much extra space in their schools. To be quite frank, even our hybrid model, with bringing our, our youngsters in at about 40% in the hybrid model, is going to stretch the governor's reopening plan 65 square foot per, per student. In the West Windsor Plainsboro school system, they had 80% of their youngsters going full-time remote. They have empty elementary schools. So Dave has been able to offer faculty members to bring their youngsters tuition-free for one year. We would not be able to do that, do that based on our, our own space issues at both the middle school and the high school and some of the elementary classroom spaces that we would need to use. So I just wanted to clarify that for you, because I think it's a great idea. And if we had the space, I would have made that recommendation to our Board to alleviate the concerns of teaching staff. But unfortunately, that's not a possibility in the Princeton School District at the time.
Thank you, Dr. Galasso. Are there other comments?
Any other questions out there? Beth, I don't see any.
Okay, if there's no further questions, that takes us to I1, which is Board Committee Highlights. The first committee would be Equity. Michelle.
Hi. Well, Equity did not meet. We allowed our regular meeting time to be used for public comment on the school formerly known as John Witherspoon name change. So that's what happened.
Okay. Facilities, Ms. Cantor.
Go into my notes. We did meet. We first got, we got updates, which many of you saw in the public today, on COVID preparations. So we got that from Dave, who was working diligently on those preparations. We also did receive our bids on a possible award of a contract for our HVAC unit at GP. But we decided we will continue to review that. And so those, that'll probably be, come up in our September 15th meeting. Dave also, Dave Harding, that is, also reported on our pool at the PUMS school, the humidification and ventilation system. And he might come to the Board and present a plan on how to make that much more operational. They've been doing repairs, but they think they need to do a larger fix to make it operational. We're moving forward with the building control systems at the four elementary schools and the middle school, which will result in energy savings, and that bid is going out. And then we are also, very excitingly, in terms of sustainability, we are going to pursue, I think it's on today's agenda, funding for both LED and other sustainable projects. And the state will be funding about 75% of the cost. And it has been estimated that it'll be as short as a two-year payback. And then that will not only create more sustainability going forward, but ongoing savings in our operational budget. In terms of the referendum, while no buildings are finalized, two of the elementary schools should be ready, should be completed this week, probably by tomorrow, CP, hopefully by Friday. And then the JW project, which has had some interruptions, we're trying to get a timetable when that will be ready for our staff to be able to return and to work and work out of the building. So that was our meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think you referenced in the beginning, the press release yesterday that had all of the different PPE and other things. We've made changes into the facilities due to the COVID thing. So if people are interested in looking on the website, I think they can find a list there, a comprehensive list of some of the changes that have happened into the building to make them safer. I guess that takes us to Finance. Mr. McDonald.
The Finance Committee has not met since we last gathered. We are hoping to schedule a meeting for the, the week ahead.
Thank you. Personnel, Ms. Bronfeld.
Sorry. Hi, Personnel also did not meet due to COVID reopening planning. We will meet the week of September 21st. And I want to give a shout out to Matt. I was on all those calls last week, and he is like a Zoom superstar, you know? We had like 600 people on one call, and it, and it's impressive just sitting back and listening, having him move every people. But it's, it's a big thing to do, you know? So I just want to say thank you, because we're a lot of meetings, a lot of people, and he let everyone speak. And obviously to Barry and Bob, but Matt was, you know, good in the background.
He's the producer. We can't do it without the producer.
I know. You're right.
Bob and, Dr. Bob and Dr. Barry had amazing stamina, I have to say, and kept going and going. It was like the Energizer Bunny.
Yes, two of them, two of them.
And Krista backing them up, too. So they were all there going.
It was good.
Yeah, never quite seen anything like that before, four hours. And then we have Policy, and Policy met very briefly this month. Peter Katz is not here. And I think we just checked in with each other. Again, we're all, our committees, we've, we've kind of taken a backseat because we want to give our administrators as much room as possible to work on restart. So we are just focusing on how we can support them. So Policy is just, didn't, didn't do a lot this month. We're kind of making sure that some of the ongoing work with the NJSBA is, is proceeding ahead. Student achievement, Betsy?
Thank you. There's no, there's no report this month. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is September 18th. If that changes, there will, that will be updated on the calendar. But thanks to all of you in the community who have been asking me when these meetings are. We appreciate your engagement, and we'll see you September 18th.
Thank you. And Negotiations, Daphna, thank you. I think you've already given us your, your update, so we appreciate that.
Thank you.
And that takes us to Policies, J1. We have a number of policies that are being moved for first reading. Can I have a motion, please? Brian, a second. Jess, thank you. Do I need, oh, it's a consent ad. I'm sorry, it's a consent. We don't even need to do that. I apologize. And then the second reading is also a consent item. And these are all policies that we are needed to support the restart. Any, any discussion? No. And then we go to K1. We're going to go through the Personnel Agenda. And again, these are mostly consent items, so I will read the heading. And if you have something that you want to stop me and speak about, please let me know. K1 is Appointments.
Hey, Beth, I'm sorry. So when I looked at the, I'm so sorry. When I looked at Policies the other day, there was only one on second reading. And now there's a bunch that all have today's date. So when were these added?
You know, I don't know. Matt. Yeah, the policies were, they were there when I released the agenda on Saturday.
Were they?
Patty, to her benefit, my assistant, who always helps with policies.
It looks like the first reads and the second reads are the same policies.
Almost the same, not, not exactly the same. So there are.
Moved them all through.
All right, so I have an issue, because the only one I remember seeing on the second was the Salary Guide, which we had talked about last time. And when we had done this before, where there were first and seconds, you guys had, someone had told us that, so we really looked at them. So I haven't read these in detail, these. So I haven't read these in detail, these seconds, because they weren't there?
There was a huge impetus with the one-to-one initiative for the, these policies. And some of them are regulations, actually more of them are regulations related to one-to-one. So Krista had reached out maybe 10 days ago. We had started to look at these. And then some of the regulations referred to some of the policies that Beth was just talking about with our school board adoption. So we had passed on a couple of these, the Internet policy we had passed on last fall. And Conduct was the other policy that we had passed on. These are policies that have to be in place. So we're trying to, we have to roll out one-to-ones, so we have to have.
I understand that. I understand that. My problem is I didn't review these because they weren't there. And so.
Would you like to have us make them an action item? Would that be helpful?
Yeah, add something too before we go on. So I think we should table the conduct discipline. And if everyone goes to the end, you'll see there's something attached to it that I have no idea what that is. And also, it relates to like gangs. And I know this is a New Jersey school board, a criminal street gang, but I don't know. I think we can do better on this one. And again, if you go to the end of the policy.
I'm sure, I'm sure we can quote-unquote do better. Just concerned that, you know, then we're going to have regulations that are referring to a policy that's not in place.
Well, when do they have to be done?
But if you look, there's a statement of values on a policy, which I've never seen before.
It's the Statement of Values that was developed at Princeton High School by the students last year as part of, you know, getting them involved in the, in the conduct. So that, I recognize what that is. But Dr. Glossom, what do you?
I think the only thing you can do, if you have this, if you don't have consensus to move the policies, then table it until the meeting on the 8th, and we will have a meeting on the 8th. And that will be before the devices are distributed.
Good.
And therefore, there will be ample time for you to review and make.
Dr. Glossom?
Yes.
So that puts us in a serious bind, September 8th. So we're going to be trying to get these out well ahead. September 8th is only six days ahead of remote learning. So we have forms and all these things that parents have to sign off on. I do, I do understand this, and I've been working so hard to try to be able to get these. So we had to kind of take boilerplate school board's policies. We ran through with Jessica the conduct policy. I'm sure there are a couple of things that, you know, we may want to change, you know? But to table them all is really going to hamper us. So some of them are regulations. There's forms on there that school boards has relating to handing out of computers. I think that it's going to be a real problem if we don't have forms for people to, so we're handing out computers. I think, you know, if the conduct one is a particular issue.
That's my only issue.
Let's table the conduct policy, and let's, let's move the others so that Matt can get the agreements signed by parents so the kids can get their devices.
Yeah, yeah.
And we can move forward. Their school board approved policies, so they're not going to be policies that are going to cause any difficulties for the school district.
And where is the Salary Guide policy now? Because that is, oh, I see it. It's in your second reading.
The Salary Guide was what the Personnel Committee.
Yeah. Got it. I just didn't see it there. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. So can I just ask going forward, if we're ever going to have firsts that are also going to be second?
Yeah. Unfortunately, this was all due to the, we have to revamp the way we do policies in the school district in the sense of being more proactive with the entire manual. I think, I think actually I would recommend that the Policy Committee start going section by section and looking at what policies they have and don't have. Because when I look through your policy book, there are some things that I think we should have that we don't have. And I think basically we need to, now that you're using school boards, we need to have, we need to go through section by section and say, okay, these are the policies we're missing. These are the policies that ought to be referred to the Policy Committee. And then the Policy Committee can determine whether or not they want them or they do not want them. But I think school boards, the reason you hire school boards or you hire Strauss S-Me is because they're constantly sending you policy that you should have. And then you have to tweak them to, you know, fit your circumstances. Some districts are K-8, some are K-12, so forth and so on. So I think, I think from in the future, how we'll operate, once we get past these crises, is that we'll take a look, we'll start doing the policy books by section so that they're always kept on an updated basis. And I think that's where, that's where it's kind of been remiss. As Matt said, I think you had conversations last spring regarding these policies, but they weren't brought to completion. And now that we have the one-to-one devices, it's imperative that the kids sign off and parents sign off to make sure that they understand their responsibilities with regard to the devices.
Ms. Deutsch, you wanted to comment?
Yeah, just, I believe that where we are with the process of conversion to the NJSBA manual is that over the course of the summer now, we've instructed NJSBA to do this, they call it a wellness check of all of our policies. Yeah, so we should by the end of the summer, contemporaneous with doing our focus on getting back to school, we have NJSBA giving us the assessment of where we have gaps in our policy manual. So hopefully that's happening as we're proceeding.
And you're right, Jess. And I think they are way behind, just like many others, because they do not have a full complement of staff that is going into the office on, you know, on every day based on, based on the COVID. So you're probably, you're probably, you're, you know, you're probably right with regard to them not getting back to us in a timely fashion. But we can reach out to them and find out where they are with the wellness check. And if they have a few sections that are, that they can, that they can send us, we'll be more than happy to start, you know, working on those policies.
Great, thank you. So where does that leave us now with this? Are we doing anything as a consent? Or are we going to? We're certainly tabling the.
Conduct.
The Conduct.
I would like action because I want, I don't want to approve it.
Okay.
For me.
And we do action on the rest? So could I have a motion to do, to approve the second reading of the policies other than Conduct? Daphna, second. Susan?
Beth, point of order. Do we need to motion to get, to table the one that we're not doing tonight? Are we just doing that administratively?
If we pull from the agenda, I don't think, if we pull from the agenda, I don't think it requires a motion. But if you want to be safe and have a motion to table that one, that would be fine.
Well, let's finish the motion that's on the table, which is to vote on everything but the Conduct, and then we can have a motion to table the Conduct. How's that?
Great.
So may I, so Matt, would you call the role on all of the policies other than the Conduct for a second read?
Have to track this outside of the changing. Who was the motion?
It was a motion by Daphna and a second by Susan.
Beth Barron?
Yes.
Betsy Bagley?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
I'm staying.
Dan Dart?
Yes.
Jess Deutsch?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Yolter Ponder? Motion passes.
Thank you. Could I have a motion to table the Conduct and Discipline of August 25th until, table it to the September 8th meeting? Betsy? Michelle, second. Give me Matt a chance to catch up.
Sorry. Beth Barron?
Yes.
Betsy Bagley?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Dan Dart?
Yes.
Beth Deutsch?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Shell Tuck Ponder?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And can we ask that comments on the Conduct Policy be sent to, where should they go? To Peter? Does that make sense?
If they could send them to Peter and Matt.
Peter and Matt.
We'll be able to, then we'll be able to put something together for the board to look at.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now we are onto the Personnel Agenda. I'm going to read the items, and if you have a, you want to stop me if there's a question or comment. So K-1 Appointments. K-2 Unaffiliated Administrators. K-3 Resignations. K-4 Retirements. K-5 Job Description, Canvas Instructional Technology. K-6 Sidebar Agreement with PRIA. K-7 Leaves of Absence. K-8 Curriculum and Instruction. K-9 Student Services. K-10 Substitute Appointments. K-11 Six Period Compensation. K-12 Personnel Items. That takes us to S, Daphna? You're on mute.
Sorry, thanks. Were we supposed to have a resolution under Personnel?
Oh, thank you for stopping us.
K-13.
K-13. I don't see it. Is it?
It's on the live agenda. Do you want me to read the motion?
That would be helpful.
Staff accommodations, be it resolved by the Board of Education that the Assistant Superintendent in Charge of Human Resources is directed to follow the legal opinion provided by the Board of Education Labor Council when reviewing requests for staff accommodations that then provide reasonable accommodations within the boundaries of the law.
So that is on the live agenda if people want to see that in writing. Can I have a motion? Brian, second. Jess, any discussion? So could we have a vote on that, please?
Beth Barron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Dan Dart?
Yes.
Jess Deutsch?
Yes.
Betsy Bagley?
Staying.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck Ponder?
Yes.
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you, Daphna, for catching that. L-1, School Nursing Plan is a consent item. L-2, Professional Consulting Services Consent. L-3, Professional Consulting Services Rethink Autism. L-4, Educational Placement Special Needs. L-5, Educational Services Teach Town. M-1, Financial Reports. M-2, Emergent Purchase Above Bid Threshold. M-3, Hipster. M-4, Student Transportation. M-5, Transportation. M-6, Direct Install Energy Savings Purchase. This is what was referenced. Brian, would you like to speak to that?
Yes, I would like to say a few things. I know many members of the public have been eager for us to take more substantive steps with respect to sustainability. And this is a very big step. This is a $570,000 program that will result in changing virtually every light fixture in our elementary schools to high-efficiency LEDs that should last for eight to 15 years, depending on how often they are on. It also includes the replacement of some of our older rooftop HVAC units and some of the split HVAC units and some of our older hot water heaters. The cost to the district will be about $145,000. The balance will be paid by the state through the Direct Install Program. And we anticipate energy savings in the range of $75,000 a year once this is complete. And we also expect that it will require less staff time since the fixtures will be easier to maintain and the bulbs will not need to be replaced nearly as often. So this is a really big, really important, really substantive. I hope we all feel good about this. And Dave and Matt have said that when their heads get above water, they will begin to work on strategies for the high school and the middle school, which are not included this, in this because of the requirements of the program, they couldn't be included at this time. Matt and I get that mostly right?
Fantastic, Brian. Thank you. Beth?
Yeah, thank you. I'm back. I also updated my, my, my agenda, and I lost everything for a second, but I'm back and I see the next item. Thank you, Brian, for that explanation. It's very exciting, this work that we're doing on sustainability. Then we have one more item under Business, the YWCA Princeton Pre-K Program. And that is also a consent item. And Dr. Glossom, did you want to just speak briefly to that?
Yes. The Y, the YWCA has been running childcare program for the entire summer, summer program. And they have really had a great experience with regard to keeping youngsters healthy with all the protocols that they have put in place. And Valerie, who is our preschool director, has requested in the board is hopefully approving that the three preschool classes that are held at the YWCA will, will start live instruction on September 14th. So we'll begin our phase up, which we hope we'll be able to begin live instruction on October 12th. So this would be the first live instruction in the Princeton School District. And we have every confidence that the Y will continue to keep kids safe with all the protocols that they've had in place for the last few months.
Thank you, Dr. Glossom. And we're very happy to be able to hear about one of our programs that, where the children are coming back. It's very, obviously very important to all of us, and, and we're glad that we're able to start there. I think that really brings us to O-1.
I just, I just have one question. There was a question in the chat earlier about whether we.
Sorry, she froze.
You're freezing, Daphna.
You're back.
I'm back?
Now you froze.
Now you're back.
You are back.
Yeah.
You know, these storms are rolling through.
Yeah.
So if I leave, I'll see you next week. Dr. Glossom, with, there was a question in the chat earlier about. Us with our. Did I go out again?
Oh, could you write, I saw the question. Did, could the YMCA provide childcare? Is that what you were going to ask?
Yes.
Okay. Well, Dr. Ginsberg answered it in the chat, but he and I, Human Services Director Melissa Urres, and the YMCA official, Paul Zager, are meeting tomorrow at 3 o'clock on a Zoom to finalize plans for all of our childcare. So, but we realized that except for children whose families are eligible for subsidized meals, it's likely that the other folks would have to pay tuition for childcare services. So yes, that could be an option for a teacher, if that's what your question was going to be, Daphna. For, for teachers who would want to come and teach and have their youngsters be provided childcare, that could be an option, yes.
Thank you. Okay. I think we're at the point where we have, we have to approve the consent agenda, get all this work finished. So could I have a motion, please? Brian, second. Michelle? Would you like to call a roll?
Beth Barron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Dan Dart?
Yes.
Jess Deutsch?
Yes.
Betsy Bagley?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Shell Tuck Ponder?
Yes.
Daphne Kendall?
Daphna?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Sentence passes.
Sentence passes. I think that brings us to Public Comment, P-1, on any topic. Am I correct, Mr. Bolden?
You are correct.
Skipping that adjournment that's up there, it's a little early.
I don't know how that got in there, but.
It's all right. We can be flexible. So if anyone else would like to comment, they could raise their hand. We ask you to keep it to three minutes. Say your name and address on any topic.
Do we have any comments out there? I-Soto or L-Soto, E-Soto? Hello?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, Louisa Soto from Princeton Kingston Road. Just a quick question about accommodations that Dr. Glosso was letting us know how, how many teachers have been requesting accommodations. Where is that number now? And I'm still concerned about what difference will the month between September and October make?
Well, thank you for the question. The number's about the same as it was last week when we reported out to the, and had the community meetings. Teachers are now submitting their documentation with regard to seeking accommodations. Our HR director will be meeting with teachers over the next two weeks, and then we will be able to determine how many teachers will actually need accommodations. And then we will make an assessment about how to open our schools and what grade levels that we can open and where we would need to find suitable replacements. The district has been proactive in that, anticipating that some of our faculty and staff may be requesting leaves of absences. He has posted a number of temporary vacancies for people to apply to. And we have a number of qualified applicants who have preliminarily applied for a position in the Princeton School District. So I think between now and October 12th, with the HVAC improvements, with the communications we've been sending to our staff, the next week, we're doing a webinar with our, with three doctors and our nurses, who are going to be videotaping FAQs for faculty and staff. And if our transmission rates in Princeton remain at the level they are now, I am optimistic that maybe we'll be able to begin our phase up plan on the 12th. That is our, that is our hope, and that is what we're working towards. And we'll keep, we'll update you next week with regard to September 8th, when we, when we have these meetings with our personnel. And we'll be able to give you a decision based on, based on our data, and also a decision on high school sports. And that will be made by next Tuesday night.
Or the 8th, the 8th.
The 8th. Did I say the?
We may have a meeting, week without a meeting.
I was almost right.
What will we do on a Tuesday?
I don't know.
We have, we have one. Is there any other public questions? Comment, public comment?
I don't see any.
If not, we had one more quick item of new business that we talked about in, in, earlier today. Debbie Bronfeld, thank you for bringing it up. But the NJFBA has recommended, or has given us a potential advocacy thing at the state level. There's a bill on, up on Thursday that has to do with very strict prescriptions on how we have relationships with our coaches that I think we are going to take a position against. Is the board, maybe we can vote to say whether we're comfortable with the draft language that was circulated? And if so, then we could send a letter as a board. Could I have a motion for that? Debbie, second? Anyone? Susan, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, can we just do a show of hands for this one? Okay, I see it. Motion passed. Everyone's hand. Matt, do you see it? Everyone put your hand up again.
I didn't see Daphne's hand. Is it up?
I don't know enough about it, so I'm just going to abstain.
Okay.
Want to make sure I'm, I'm not trying to call anyone up.
It's just a simple position letter. Looks like the motion has passed by a vote of, I'm not sure what the number was, Matt.
I got everyone's hand up. Jess, your hand was up too, right?
So eight to one.
Eight with one.
One abstention, yeah.
Correct. Absolutely.
And is there anyone who'd like to take the lead on just putting a draft of that together? I think it just needs to be customized, or I could just do it on behalf of the board. What would you guys like to do? Should I just, I can just send it in the form that we circulated?
One word, it said I, it should be we.
Exactly. I think everything else is fine. If there's no further business, can I have a?
I, oh, no, no, I have a question. I'm sorry to do this. And I did have a bet that the meeting ended at 9:30, so this might go on a while. But just kidding. So we've been talking about having our board meetings in public. And so I know there's a lot of logistical things, but some members of the community are saying that if it's safe enough for our kids and staff to go back in the building, why, why isn't the board? And so, I mean, me and several other board members have been in and out of Valley Road all summer. And so I'm, I myself am impressed with the protocols that have been put in place. And so this is something we've talked about. And I guess one of the issues is logistical, right? Like, how are we going to all separate six feet apart and in front of a camera?
I think we also talked about how do we, it seems, the public seems to really, I think, a lot of people really like this format in the sense that they can be involved from their homes and they can participate. And we've certainly had a lot more attendance than we ever had in person. And I don't know how we could have the public in person at the meetings. How would you do that?
I would just, I would just add, I think we should look into this. Perhaps there's not an unlimited number of the public that we could accommodate. So there would have to be an online option for the public to join via Zoom, because, you know, we know we can't put an unlimited number of students, even if we use an auditorium.
Well, and indoor gatherings are limited now at 25. And we're, how many are we now? Right here, we're 15.
Right.
So, right.
Be significantly limiting your public.
Yeah, which we can't do.
Right. That's my, my point, because right now, it's more equitable than it's ever been in terms of access with people with kids and people that work. What, that would just be, you know, demonstrating that we're willing to get into a room together, but not serving our obligation to the public.
Well, could we Zoom in, in the room there? Right. What if we, what if we came together and closed the room to the public and the public would join via Zoom?
We
Doesn't make any sense to me.
We've done that with staff meetings. And to be quite honest with you, the Zoom app doesn't really lend itself to multiple people in a room. You'd have to constantly be muting and cutting your mic call. And if not, you get all verbarations. And it really didn't work for me with my general staff meetings. I had eight of us in a room and 30, and 30 people remote. It was really not well done because of the technology issues with Zoom. So, you know, I, I, I understand the, the parent and even staff, you know, if the board can't meet in public, then how can I come back to work? Well, there's a little significant difference. If I'm a staff member and I'm coming back to my individual classroom to get my materials together, or build a lesson, or do something like that, that's significantly different. Being isolated in your classroom and not having any interaction with another person than it would be in a public meeting. And I think Michelle's point's well taken. You're going to limit the number of people who are actually going to be there. I'm meeting with a community group on Thursday morning at Valley Road. And it's going to be four of us. And I had to limit it to like 10 or 12 people who wanted to meet, because there just isn't enough physical space to keep the six feet apart and so forth and so on. And we're going to meet live without technology, you know. So I, I think we ought to look into it. I think, I think you're right, Betsy. I think we ought to look at the technology and what we can provide. I'm, actually, I'm meeting with our tech people on Friday after, or Friday in the office. So I'll talk to them about where we could set up and how that logistically could work. And then I'll send you something with our recommendations. But I think for the 8th, we ought to still meet, meet remote, maybe the 15th remote. And maybe as we get closer to our October date, we could have something developed, which would be what, the 22nd, 29th, I guess, of September? Is that the, my calendar skills are good?
Yeah.
29th, that would be right before we would be reopening. And maybe that's when we can start to do live board meetings, if, if technology allows it. And if we're not going to eliminate a lot of people who want to participate, especially as we get closer to a reopening and having more information for them. And we had 550 people last, last week. We'd never be able to accommodate 50 people or 100 people in a social, a social setting as we're, I mean, we're still in phase two with the governor's order, right? So, you know, he's, he's waived that public order for public schools, but not for public gatherings. And the board meeting, I think, is a public gathering. So, so that may be, that may be something significant there.
We have a format that's working really well for including the public, so I would hate to sacrifice that.
I agree.
Susan?
Yeah. And also, if we move to that format, I would like some clarification, like if a board member's in quarantine or something, even if the board's meeting in public, are they allowed to Zoom in? You know, would that be considered attending or not attending?
Yeah. I'd have to look, I'd have to look at your policy, because a lot of districts prior to COVID did not have a remote option for people.
Dark.
We're going to have to, we're going to have, that's one of the policies. You're going to have to take a look at it. Look at it. I've always had a remote option, because we've always had inclement weather.
I think we created that just as we started.
We did.
Jess?
So I agree. It's just something we can think about as we move forward, because if we have some hybrid option, how would hybrid option work?
Right.
You mean, the board members are going to apply for a hybrid option?
Brian, did you have something you wanted to say?
I, well, on the prior topic, I just thought, since we have a very good relationship with, I believe they're now called commissioners, Commissioner Andrews Wicker, whether we would want to be in touch with him directly about the vote on Thursday.
I think it's a Senate. Yeah.
Senate?
The Senate.
Okay.
But, thank you. Okay. Can I have a motion to adjourn? There's nothing further. Jess? Second, I think, Dan, did I see your hand? Yes, thank you. All in favor? Okay, I think motion's passed. 8:41 people.
Lost your bit.
Adjourned. Most of your families.
Bye.
Bye. Good night.
Thank you.
Night. Take care.